Welcome to Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 22nd of 2018, and we'll start with the rule call, please.
Jeff Jarrett.
Present.
John McCoynson.
Here.
Ryan Kelly is excused.
Medina Aginson.
Here.
Sherri Bud.
Here.
Joan Fransoy.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Here, thank you very much. We have an agenda before us, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So do we.
Mr. Aschel Capital supports Commissioner Boynton. Any changes or additions to the agenda? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the agenda's approved. We have minutes from the meeting of August 8th of 2018. Is there a motion to approve the August 8th minutes?
So, support?
Take Commissioner Fransoy, support Commissioner Boynton. Any corrections or changes to a lot of pages of minutes from a very lengthy meeting?
Yes ma'am. My name was misspelled a couple times.
Well, we've got to fix that. Mr. Boynton? Correction of Mr. Boynton's name spelling. Anything else? All in favor of approving the August 8th, 2018 minutes with the correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and those minutes are approved. Thanks very much. You did a good job on those. First item tonight under new business. The applicant, Ashley Crossroads South LLC, is requesting site plan approval to add additional car parking to service the existing Building 1. The subject property is located at the Crossroads South Development. Its address is 41775 N. 41873 E. Course Road. We'll start with a presentation by the applicant, please.
I apologize, gentlemen, and so as well, Ashley Capital first time.
Mr. Webb, you want to come up to this podium and microphone? Great, thanks. Okay, so...
Yeah.
All right, I interrupted you, so we'll have... Get yourself set up, and then we'll start.
Ron, should I just pop on?
Yeah, it's okay. Just takes a second for a while.
Okay. Hi, my name is Joseph Webb. I'm a design engineer for Ashley Capital, and I'm not overly familiar with the project. As I mentioned, the gentleman from Ashley Capital was supposed to be here this evening. I believe he's caught in traffic, and I don't know when he's going to be showing up. I can give you the lowdown for the project. I know that the additional car parking is for FedEx. They're a little congested during shift change, so this is going to alleviate the problems that they're having with people swapping out cars... Their car parking spaces. Sorry, wasn't... Is there any... I'm more than willing to answer questions as they come down, if you have them.
Okay, we actually have review letters from some of our professionals, so I think if...
If I just want to address those?
We'll have them go through the review for us, and then we'll see what questions, and if you can answer them, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
If there's nothing else you want to tell us at this time. Great, thanks for pin-shitting, we appreciate it. All right, we'll start first with McKenna Associates' letter. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. We have reviewed the plans, and we have a review letter dated August 3rd of 2018 with our findings and recommendations. As a background, the applicant is proposing to expand the passenger vehicle parking lot in the southwest corner of Building 1, which is the southern building. The proposed addition is 59 parking spaces. The area that's subject to the changes on the site is about three acres in size, and the site is part of a larger parcel that is occupied by two large industrial warehouse buildings that go from E. Course Road almost to Tyler Road to the south. This area under review is located southwest of Building 1 and just north of the post-drain. In addition to the proposed 59 parking spaces, there are also changes proposed to replace the driveway, replace some removed trees, and install additional parking lot landscaping. And because the site changes are limited to these changes within an interior three-acre area of the site, our review is mostly confined to this three-acre area and includes other elements as needed, and some of those elements I'll get into a little bit later in the letter. The site is zoned M1, which is light industrial, and the area where the parking lot changes are proposed are all located within the M1 district, so the use is conforming within the area. And I mention that because there's a residential district, the R1C district, located to the With the setback in dimension requirements, the setback dimension requirements of the M1 district are met on the site. Our only comment there is that Sheet C1 of the plans must be updated to correct the minimum setback requirements, and all the pages must be consistent. On page 2 of our letter, the... Most of our findings in this letter are related to parking and loading, not just for the subject changes, but also with some of the truck parking further south. First with the passenger vehicle spaces. Based on the floor area of Building Number 1, there are 418 parking spaces required. There are currently 266 parking spaces servicing Building 1, and the proposed 59 parking spaces will raise the total number of spaces to 325. Therefore, the additional 59 spaces will make the parking lot more conforming. Although it'll still be non-conforming, there are flexibilities in the zoning ordinance, especially for industrial uses, to have far fewer or significantly more parking spaces, and a lot of that is based on the use of the building itself. For the space dimensions and the striping, the spaces meet the required area of nine and a half feet wide by 18 feet deep. We recommend that the plans note that double striping is required by the zoning ordinance, and although Note 17 on Sheet C1 states that single striping is shown on the plan, Sheets C2 and L1 must be revised to show the required double striping. We also recommend that there be a condition of approval that all other parking spaces on the entire parcel be double striped the next time they're repainted. The next item for barrier-free spaces, for parking lots between 301 and 400 spaces, I believe the Americans with Disabilities Act requires eight barrier-free spaces, so we recommend that those number of barrier-free spaces be shown on the plans. And then finally, with respect to the parking, there is a concurrent application in the process for a request to rezone with conditions, the south side of the site, from R1C to M1, to allow for truck parking. That area on the southern part of the site is 13.79 acres. Now, this site is not part of the subject site with the parking, but it is on the same site of Ashley Capital, so it's worth noting. That application is still active, although it's not being processed at this time. I think the applicant has requested that that be deferred because there were several concerns raised with conditional rezoning from R1C to M1 in the southern area where there's trucks parked, and not the least of which is that at this time, it's not entirely supported by the master plan. The township is in the process of going through a master plan update. What that will yield for that southern part of the site, we don't yet know, but I think the applicant is willing to wait on the outcome of the master plan to determine how to proceed with that rezoning with conditions application. The reason for that proposed application is there's currently a number of trucks parked on that site. In 2003, in this 13.79 acre portion of the site, there was a site plan approved for 117 additional truck parking spaces and a detention pond south of it. Those approved 117 spaces were constructed, and at some point after that pond was filled in with asphalt millings, it was paved over, and it was created for extended parking area for trucks and trailers. This modification, to our knowledge, didn't get approval from the Township Planning Commission or from Wayne County. This issue with the additional truck parking came up in 2015 when it was discovered by the township when the applicant was applying for an electrical permit in the area. Since becoming aware of the violation, the township has attempted to work with the applicant to correct the violation, and the current site plan application is accompanied by a letter from Wayne County dated June 29th of 2017, which essentially approved plans submitted to Wayne County insofar as the interest of the county was concerned. To our knowledge, this truck parking area is still in violation with the township's ordinance and the 2003 site plan. So although it will take time for the outcome of the rezoning application for this 13.79 acre portion of the site, we recommend that the plans include a note that the filling and parking in the southern part of the property was not approved by the township. We also recommend a note be added to the plan stating that the proposed changes to the site explicitly exclude any facilities outside of the subject three-acre review area. Also, that truck parking on the south side of the site is illustrated in light gray lines in the plans, and we recommend that those lines be removed from the plans, just so that there's no indication that there's any implied approval. On page 3 of our review letter, for the lighting, our recommendation is that a lighting plan and photometric plan of the parking area be included that meets the requirements of... It should be Section 8.105, so it was the incorrect section. The correct lighting section is 8.105. Under Number 5 for landscaping and screening, we recommend that the height of the evergreens be increased to eight feet for those that are proposed on the site plan. And also, although there's an existing green belt to the south that predates the current green belt buffering requirements of the ordinance, we recommend that the existing green belt area be illustrated on the plans. And we also recommend that additional trees be planted in the buffer area south of the proposed parking lot in accordance with the zoning ordinance, if there is sufficient area to plant those additional evergreen buffer trees. And then finally, the tree replacement standards are met with some additional trees being planted to replace those that are being cut down for the parking lot expansion. At the bottom of page 3 is our summary and recommendation, which is a recommendation of approval with conditions based on the fact that the site plan within that three-acre area complies with most of the technical standards of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission may approve the following as conditions of approval to either be confirmed by the Planning Director or on revised plans, subject to future review of the Planning Commission. And our recommendation is with nine conditions, in addition to any other conditions that may come up with the Township Engineer or the Planning Commission. The first condition is that Sheet C1 of the plans be updated to correct the minimum setback requirements. The second, that all proposed parking spaces be double striped per Section 9.104(c) of the zoning ordinance, and that Sheets C2 and L1 be revised to show the required double striping. Third, that a note be added to the plans that all other parking spaces on the parcel be double striped per Section 9.104(c) the next time they are repainted. Fourth, that the required barrier-free spaces be shown on the plans. Fifth, that the plans include a note that the filling and truck parking in the southern part of the property was not approved by the township, and that a note be added to the plans stating that the proposed changes to the site explicitly excludes any facilities outside of the subject three-acre review area. Sixth, that the additional truck parking area is illustrated in light gray lines in the plans be removed from the plans if they were not previously approved by the township. Seventh, that a lighting plan and photometric plan for the proposed parking area be submitted that meets the requirements of Section 8.105 of the zoning ordinance. Eight, that the height of the evergreen trees be increased to at least eight feet pursuant to Section 10.104(b) of the zoning ordinance. And finally, Number 9, that the existing green belt area located south of the proposed parking lot be illustrated on the plans, and that additional evergreen trees be planted in this green belt area in accordance with Section 10.103(e), if there is sufficient area to plant additional evergreen trees in the buffer/berm area. That concludes our report and recommendations, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
We'll just go on with the rest of our recommendations and see where we come up. Mr. Potter, you have a recommendation from Fishback, Council Car and Hoover?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, at this stage, we're recommending Planning Commission grant preliminary approval for this site plan. There are some items here that we'll discuss, and Joe, you did receive our letter?
Yeah, I think we actually... That's posted on the Wayne County plans, I didn't probably get that.
I have not seen them. That's one of my questions I had. So in general, when you see on the plan with a new parking area, they're going to tap an existing structure, and we want to see a little more detail in the engineering plans, obviously, of how you're going to tap that, and is it... Is that manhole big enough, and how you're affecting the existing parking there? Overall, we're asking for the overall drainage system map to be included, because we don't have that as part of this expansion, so it's probably included in the Wayne County plans, right? In addition to that, and in engineering plans, we'll expect to see conveyance and detention and storage calcs confirming capacity, storage capacity. Also, your BMPs, I'm sure you've had a discussion with Wayne County.
Actually, for the existing basement, we're constructing a four-bay.
And the letter that we received, we did see a June 29th. This is dated 2017 for some asples. Has that been resolved?
Yes, that had to do with the post-drain.
The post-drain, yeah.
The stormwater retention, and actually, for the entire site, for all potential impervious areas, and the new storm sewer that we're doing there, and it's also, again, the modification of the existing basin or four-bay, and all putting in new standbays and stuff.
So at this stage, we recommend that the plan shows feasibility from a preliminary standpoint. We recommend approval, and then we'll have a lot of these clarified in great detail in the engineering plan. So if you have any questions, they'll be had to answer.
I have a quick question. Is it customary now that an applicant would submit everything to Wayne County but not submit any of that to the township until they have Wayne County's response?
Well, in the preliminary stage, we look for engineering feasibility. We know it has to be addressed, but a lot of times, the detail's not going to show up that we're looking for. It will show up in engineering. We look for general... If there's going to be a need for a cardinal change to the site that might affect their geometry, their layout, then we will not recommend at this point, which we've done in the past, because we want that clarified. But in this case, we feel that there's sufficient information there to go to the next step.
I can shed a little light why we submitted to Wayne County prior to submitting for site plan. We went through the site plan review process for this car parking pod several years ago, and that's when the issue about the post-drain, the trailer staging, some other items came up. So we needed to get... At that time, we needed Wayne County approval in order to continue with our site plan approval process with Van Buren Township, so...
Thank you. All right, anything else, Mr. Potter?
Yeah, just one comment on the Wayne County's storm grade issues. They tend to have a very large hammer, okay? And they have a lot more detail as far as their countywide NPDS permit, and so we watch what those comments are. We always catch them during the engineering review, but if it's going to affect a big geometric change that might affect their site layout, then we really become engaged at this stage.
Good to know, thank you. All right, we also have a review from the Fire Marshal. Anything to note from that, Director Akers?
Actually, there is not. They reviewed the plans for parking lot addition, find no issues from a life safety standpoint, and based on that, they had recommended approval of the progression of the project that the site plans submitted.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, questions and comments? Just one from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boynton?
I guess mine would be for Director Akers. On... In the McKenna letter, page 2, under Number 3D, when McKenna was making their presentation, we have the line in there, "Since becoming aware of the violation," meaning of the filled-in pond. We've been working with the applicant to correct the violation. I would like to know what status we have with that, Number 1, and Number 2, I know we've had some discussion about Wayne County, but I want to make sure that I'm not confused. Are... Is this project here then approved or is supported by Wayne County with the pond being filled in? I don't know whether it was arbitrary or not, but... And I don't want to ask him, because he may not have been around when it happened, but...
I can answer that question. Looking for the pond.
Okay. I'd like to know where we are in working with our resident.
Sure. One of the comments that was made way back when these ideas... When these issues were originally brought up was that they needed to come into compliance with Wayne County standards, and the complaint back in 2015 was referred to Wayne County. So as Mr. Webb had indicated, in 2017, they got... They had some plans which were submitted to Wayne County which were approved. So as far as Wayne County's concerned, you know, those issues have been resolved on their end with whatever updates the county had required them to do. Now on our end, there's a couple different issues. You know, they expanded truck parking illegally, so it's not in compliance with the current site plan that we have for the site, and it's also not in a zoning district which allows that type of use. So realistically, the applicant has two pathways moving forward. The one pathway would be that they could just remove the parking area, restore it back to what it was. And the second pathway, which is the one that they're going down, is they're making efforts to come into compliance by applying for the various approvals that they need at the township to come into compliance. So earlier in the year, they applied for a rezoning of the property from R1C to M1. We submitted that to McKenna and Associates, had it reviewed. The review came back, as it turns out, the master plan needs to be updated, and at the time, because the master plan is not consistent with what they were asking for, approval could... Is not going to be... Wasn't recommended. So what Ashley Capital is going to have to do is, as we're working through this master plan update on our end, they're going to have to be reaching out to the Planning Commission and the Master Plans Committee to ask if they're interested in changing our future land use map to be able to accommodate that type of use in that area. And so if the Planning Commission and the board does amend the future land use map to be able to do that, then we can consider the conditional rezoning or the rezoning of the property, and then we... They would have to go through site plan review. So there's still a series of steps that they need to take in order to get there, but right now, it's at the point of, you know, the master plan needs to reflect what they want to do, or if it doesn't, then they won't be able to continue it.
To the Chair, did they install the lights? I know they applied for a permit, which they probably did not get, but did they install the lights?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I guess just a comment or maybe a statement at this point, which is, considering all that is involved, let's make sure that our resident applicant and the township, we don't get too far ahead of all of these concurrent things as they're going on, and that as things need to be in place before we take the next step, let's do that. Don't have a problem with working and doing things, like I said, concurrently, but let's not get too far ahead of anything, whereas the township puts themselves in a bad position, or our resident puts themselves in a bad position. And I say all of that in protection of our resident, as with anyone else, because they're here, they reside here in the township. We share services, and I just want to make sure we look out for their best interests as well.
Absolutely.
I'm done.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Jarrett?
Does the site currently have adequate stormwater detention?
I'll defer to the Township Engineer and Mr. ...
Let me respond first. What we're going to be looking for in the engineering, some of the comments here, is confirmation of the drainage areas, the storage volumes, the calculations, because when we received a copy of this letter from Wayne County, it's dated June 29th, they specifically said, hey, there's additional information you have to provide. So this plan here shows feasibility from this site, but we flagged it already because we said, hey, did you... Have you complied with all the Wayne County requirements? And to kind of put things in perspective, if a site was near, let's say, a state highway or freeway, and they wanted an exit and things like that, that has a big umbrella for jurisdiction. We kind of, you know, if they don't get their exit, anything we do here is not going to be implemented, because the site's not going to be feasible. So we look at that larger umbrella, the jurisdictional issues with them, that the road commissions, Wayne County for drainage. We're very aware of what's going on here that they'd have to comply, you know, comply with on the local level. So we've made those comments, he's aware that we're going to be looking for that, and one of the items is, you know, do they have enough volume based on the standards that were in place when the original plan was approved, and what's affected now? And they've got to show then engineering feasibility at that stage. So this moves them down the road a little bit, but they're not going to get a green light to construct anything until they confirm that.
Thank you.
Good. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir. Yes, please come up to the podium. Tell us your name and address.
First of all, my name is Vic Fransoy. I'm the other half of Commissioner Fransoy's happy couple. I live in Van Buren Township, by the way. I fail to see how you can do anything when these people did something totally wrong. The first thing I'd do is tell them, get a shovel and start digging. Take care of that, then come see me, because if that was my kid, they'd be out there digging. Shame on you. Shame on what you did, and now you got caught, and now you want a favor, so now you come back and mea culpa, mea culpa. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Fransoy. Anyone else? Comments, questions?
I have to say that I was very taken aback by the... To find out in the review letter, at this point, that we have such a serious... A serious incident of an approved site plan from an applicant that has come to us many times and continues to come to us, we think, and it's disheartening. I think that the way this township runs is we want businesses to succeed, and I think we have an excellent staff and excellent professionals that we work with that bend over as far as they can without breaking to make sure that businesses get what they need. But Ashley Capital never came and said, oh, gosh, we've got a problem, can you help us fix it? They just took it upon themselves to break the law, and that makes it really hard to trust anything that you're telling us here tonight and anything that you continue to tell us in the future. I think you've hurt your standing with me and possibly with this Commission, and I don't know what you can do to repair that, because it's egregious. I'm not interested... I'm not interested tonight in approving much of anything. There's too many things outstanding. There's outstanding questions, and there's outstanding detail on this piece of paper that does not allow you to move forward with the rules and regulations that we operate under. It is up to the board to decide what direction they want to give you, so that's my question to the Commission right now.
To the Chair. I certainly agree with what you've said. When I looked at this, I thought, my goodness, they should have corrected those problems before they come asking for anything else, so I'm not willing to move forward with anything at this time, either.
To the Chair. I agree with Commissioner Bud and yourself. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Boynton? Do you have a voice of reason tonight?
Well, I think... I think it was my voice that kind of got this ball rolling with the question of the status of where we were in correcting of the violation and the additional information that has been revealed. And with that, if... And with that, if it is appropriate at this time, I am willing to put forth the appropriate action, whether it be, and I don't know what it is, whether or not it is a motion to table or to not approve. I don't know which way to go, I don't know which action would be appropriate for us to take right now. I don't, I don't think we have to keep going over and over and over it at this point. I just want to know which way to go, which would be the appropriate verbiage, disapproval or table, until we get all this stuff fixed up.
Director Akers, do you have a direction for us?
Yes.
So, if the concern is because of all the, because of, for this, the proposed parking lot expansion, that they've, that they've proposed in these plans, if that's the concern, and the concern is the number of outstanding items that are in the staff reports, the Planning Commission could make a motion to postpone decision on preliminary site plan approval until such a time that you receive revised plans which have addressed these comments and concerns. If that's the direction, then that would be the course of action.
Then that would be...
Okay, is there support? Support?
Yes, support.
Take support from the Commissioner. Mr. Jarrett, then, I want to make sure we have the motion. Ms. Harmon, she has the motion. All right. So, the motion is to postpone preliminary approval until the conditions in the recommendations have been met. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Oh, I just want clarification on what was needed for the car parking lot itself.
I think it's everything that's spelled out in all of the recommending letters that we heard tonight. All right. I think we have a little technical break, and then Grace Moore is going to walk us through public participation plan presentation and discussion.
Yay! It does back up to the school.
That's right. No business being parked, trucks parked back there, and no retention. Because when you flood up at school, then what do you do?
Have you microphone still on?
Oh, yeah.
I've had one, it's more than two, and I've thought, and I've thought of, and I've thought of Bob McKenna, who was here at church. I can be greedy on this, but...
All right. I think we're ready now. Grace Moore, please take it away.
I'm going to talk about the public participation plan that I've been spending most of my internship so far working on. So, just kind of an overview to begin with of what it is. It's kind of a formal written commitment to involving the community in Van Buren Township's planning and development process. So, of course, we already do that in a variety of ways, like the public hearing that we just had, but really, this just puts all of our strategies in one place, and also kind of gives the basis for why we do them. And then it also acts as a proactive guide for when and how that we, when and how we involve the community. So, it's going to have a chart of five different kinds of community input that kind of range from, like, just informing the community of what we're doing, to really collaborating with them and seeing what they want. So, the idea is that it'll really keep us ahead of the game by having a way to choose a category of public participation, and then different options with it, so that we're being proactive, instead of having a situation come up, and then having to react to it and trying to figure out what we should be doing. So, as far as who it affects, one of the goals of the plan is that it coordinates public participation across Township departments. This does not mean that it's going to become a cookie cutter approach against all the departments. Obviously, they all have different responsibilities of what they do and who they interact with. So, for example, though we did talk with the senior center to see what kind of things they do when they reach out to their members, they're not going to be required to, like, do public notices of the activities they have going on the way we would do a public notice of a meeting. However, something like the Parks and Rec Department, when they're updating their master plan, they will have to follow a procedure of the guidelines of what they do, so that people know that we're updating it and can give some input. There's also multiple benefits to the plan, and they kind of all work together. So, to begin with, it really just builds trust between the community and the Township government, because instead of getting to the end of the development process and then just giving a chance at the end for people to hear what's going on and provide some input, throughout the process, they can get some more information, and then learn what's going on, and hopefully get some input. And then also, that will minimize disputes, hopefully, that's another one of the goals, because people can talk about and have any of their concerns addressed throughout the process, instead of getting to the public hearing and then having concerns right before the Board needs to make a decision, or the Commission needs to make a decision. And then, really, the main goal of it is that it's part of the redevelopment-ready community certification, which the Township is working towards. So, then, just a little bit about the redevelopment-ready communities, is that it's a certification from the MEDC, so the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which signals that the community has a clear development process, and that'll also be something that will be looked at, the development review process, a community-supported vision, and that's really the main thing that the public participation plan is getting at. But also, a predictable development review process and sites that are ready for development. Those are another aspect of it. And then, once you get all of those and you're approved, the MEDC will actually help you to promote and market those sites, to hopefully get some new development in there. And then, I also just wanted to give you guys an overview of the content of the plan. So, it has a bunch of different components. It starts with a set of goals for the plan, and then a discussion of the state legislation that requires public participation, so that's the part that I was talking earlier about, that you have to provide kind of the basis for why you do public participation. So, specifically, that's the Michigan Open Meetings Act, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and then the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, but you guys are probably aware of all those already. And then, there's a list of key stakeholders in the Township's development process. Those range from, like, service organizations, to religious organizations, to Wayne County, basically anybody that might have a stake in a large development process in the community. And then, there is what the state calls a communication toolbox, so that really outlines all of our public participation strategies, and that would be where those five, where there's those five categories I talk about, and there's kind of a flow chart to help you decide which one, and then it lists out a bunch of different strategies and the categories for you to choose between, and then describes them also. And then, there's also going to be outreach guidelines for specific planning scenarios. So, say, we're doing a master plan update, there's going to be a guide of, here's all the steps that we should take along the way, so that people are properly informed and can give their input, or something like a controversial project, or a project that we deem to be controversial, and that you think people might have problems with. It'll have guidelines for what can we do along the way to make it less controversial at the end. So, an example like that is Project Pancake, there was an informational meeting, so people could learn about it, so it would go more smoothly when approval needed to be done. And then, there's also ways to share the results with the public, so an easy example of that is, like, we post the minutes online from this meeting, so it'll be really just, here's this input we have, or this information we shared with you, here's how you can go see it again. And then, also, it will include ways to evaluate and update the plan, because that really is meant to be a living document that can be updated as we see what stuff works, what stuff doesn't work, what we need to add, so that it's not just stuck the way it is. And then, finally, I also wanted to go over the process that we're using to make this plan, just so you guys are aware. So, I started out by doing a lot of research, and that had to do with reading everything from the MEDC on the redevelopment-ready communities, specifically on the public participation plan. They have a guide that you can go through, that's really a how-to of how to write one of these plans. Also, I researched communities that had already done these plans, and kind of read, probably read 10 to 12 of those, of a bunch of different communities. There were two or three that really stood out, while a lot of the other ones just kind of did the bare minimum from the state requirements. We're shooting to be one of the two or three that really stands out. So, if we're going to do this plan, we're going to do it well. So, those have been really good examples and guidelines to follow. Reached out to a couple of people, they have given us some help, as, just as we're doing the plan of what has been helpful. So, after I've done all that research, Ron and I met with various departments in the Township to just kind of see what they're doing, what stuff works for them, what stuff doesn't work for them. And then, we also met with the treasurer, the clerk, and the supervisor, to make sure they knew what we were doing, to get them on board, to answer any of their questions. We really didn't want to move forward without making sure that we had their buy-in. So, now, really, what I'm doing is drafting the plan. So, that includes all the research I've done so far, all that kind of data, and also just working closely with Ron and Matt, again, as I have questions, and as they can really provide more information, because they've been here a lot longer than I have. And then, eventually, it'll go to the Township Board for approval, but before that, we're definitely going to share it with the Planning Commission, have your guys input, any questions that you have, really just have you review it, because we're going to ask you to recommend it to the Township Board. So, that is the public participation plan. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Chair, Mr. Jarrett.
So, you mentioned that some of the communities stood out in your research. Which communities?
Traverse City, and Kalamazoo, and then Lansing was pretty good also.
Good, interesting. Thank you.
Good, we want our supreme heirloom, Traverse City, so.
Aim for harbor space.
Good, anyone else? Anyone in the audience? Nice job, Grace. Thanks, we look forward to it. We look forward to you bringing something back for us to review. Anything else for general discussion tonight? Permission from the audience? There's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Boynton, support?
Support.
Commissioner Badgerton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we adjourn. Thank you all.